Good evening, I'd like to call to order the West Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of March 7th, 2016. Would please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. May I have a motion for the approval of minutes from the February 22nd, 2016 School Committee Meeting?
Moved, second.
Moved to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. And now for the recognitions. I would like for Dr. Oakley to come with me over to the podium. Hold on one second. So our first recognition tonight is to Mr. Anthony Davidson, who is our Howard School Geography Bee winner. Come on up. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please.
Come on over here.
Why not this one? Does this one work?
I think so, I think this one works.
No.
This one's perfect. Go right ahead.
Thank you, everyone, for congratulating me. I'd just like to thank my moms for helping me make this possible. Now he will say a few, now my mom will say a few words.
My name is Beth Robinson, I am one of Anthony Davidson's moms. I'd like to take a minute to explain to you how big this achievement is to us, to Anthony, and to the West Bridgewater School System. You see, when Anthony was two and a half, he was diagnosed with autism. We had early intervention in place, and then the school system picked him up on his third birthday. He started right into Mrs. LaBrecce's Integrated Preschool Program, and his team of cheerleaders and supporters grew every year since then. I can't say enough about the special needs services provided to him in the West Bridgewater Schools. I wanted to share the words I posted to social media the day of the Geography Bee. We are beyond proud. Anthony won his school-wide Geography Bee in school today. The support from the teachers and students alike was simply overwhelming. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes support that helped him get this far. He spent a week with his teachers just practicing being able to be on that stage. He had his support staff strategically hiding behind the curtain to help him with his social cues. He was brave, he was determined, but what I'm even more proud of is that he was graceful. He congratulated each contestant during their disappointing walk off the stage after each elimination round. He stayed humble. When his teacher asked him why he was so calm after he won, he responded that he was just trying to be casual. He said he didn't want others to feel bad because they didn't win. Yes, our son has a brain filled with more facts than we can even imagine, but it's what's inside his heart that makes us proud to be his moms.
Thank you so very much. Our next recognition, although maybe not as emotional, but still as important, is to Mr. Anthony Nardelli for the Project 351. Anthony, would you like to come up?
Thanks for representing us.
Thank you. I'd just like to say a few words before Anthony does. Anthony was chosen from the eighth grade class to represent West Bridgewater, I believe among over 300 districts, to go into the State House, I believe, and to do service projects and to basically pay it back to your community, so Anthony can do a much better job than I can to explain it. So, Anthony?
Hi, everyone, my name is Anthony Nardelli, and I'm an eighth grade student here at West Bridgewater. This January, I was elected by the teacher staff for the eighth grade for the Project 351. Project 351 is a program where they ask students from all around the state to represent a town and city. The whole goal of Project 351 is to get young kids like me to be involved in our local community. On January 16th, I spent my Saturday in Boston with around 400 kids, other kids. At first, I was really nervous, I wasn't sure what to expect. Saturday morning, I woke up at 6:30 to get on a bus to head into Boston with around 20 to 30 other kids from around the district. When I got on that bus, I realized I knew some of the kids from other activities I do outside of school. First, when we got into Boston, I got more information about my day I was getting myself into, and we met in Faneuil Hall. This is where we spoke to the Governor and other selectmen around in Boston. There was a presentation from Arthur Luther King, and we also got information about our civil service leaders. Next, we got onto the bus where we ate lunch and headed to our service site. At my service site, we painted murals for Boston playgrounds and made packets with scarves, hats, gloves, and other winter clothing. That's where I spent most of my day. After that, we went to the JFK Library where we met with the other 450 kids. This is where we went over our daily, our achievements for the day. We came out to have over 270 packets packed for the needy, and we spoke to more selectmen, and Robert Kraft gave us a call from Gillette where they were about to take on their weekly matchup. After that, our day was almost completed, but we ate dinner there, and we then finally got into our bus and headed home. My service continues this spring, I'm hoping to talk to Mr. Broadwell about having the clothes dry here in West Bridgewater. The clothes dry is going to consist of little children's clothes, I hope to put a box in each one of the schools, and that's going to happen around the end of March, hopefully. Thank you for having me, it was really an honor.
That was terrific, thank you so much to Anthony Davidson and Anthony Nardelli, you're amazing representatives, thank you. So why don't we take a little break to allow our representatives to go home and have some time with their family? Thank you. Anthony, thanks, you're awesome, thank you so much guys, thank you. Me too, you can have it later. I know he must be. You could, um, I'll photo bomb you later. Alright, so are we ready? You guys ready?
I just got an update that at halftime of the girls' game, it's Cathedral 21, West Bridgewater 11, but, um...
Halftime, okay, still plenty of time.
Still plenty of time to come back?
Excellent. Okay, are we ready? Excellent, alright, so we are back on. And before we go further with the agenda, I'd like to welcome Marissa Molinari as our student rep, so I apologize for not at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you very much for your time. Now, under Personnel, Dr. Oakley, I think you have some retirements to talk about?
We have three retirements that came in in January, the rest is known by February 1st. And the three longtime employees in the West Bridgewater School System, the first one is Marie Dowling, and all you kids, you probably have had her, she is the elementary librarian at Spring, Rose McDonald, and Howard School. She does one of the five specialists for that. Marie has been with the West Bridgewater School System for over 15 years as the librarian, and she also, her daughter teaches here too, is a specialist, so the Dowling family has been well represented in West Bridgewater. Marie did a lot, especially throughout the years, to create the specialist program for the kids, to connect, to make connections with our public library for the kids, and to really try to give them a love for books. Lastly, one of the things that, even though she knew she was going to be retiring, she still committed to our new program called Destiny, which puts all our databases and all our books, and takes them and gets rid of doing it by hand and having everything separated, and puts it all in one place through the use of technology. And she spent all last year and this year during her professional development time doing that for us, to make sure that it was all ready to go before she left. So I want to thank Marie for her years of service and what she's done for the kids of West Bridgewater. Secondly, we have Connie Keating, third grade teacher. Connie's also been here for about 15 years, 13 years as a grade-three teacher, and before that, she started as Title I. Connie actually grew up in West Bridgewater and still lives in the town. She, this year, took on a challenge that she did, she had joint classroom or she had team classroom with another teacher, and because of her love for math, she decided that she would go headfirst into the new math program and take that on because she loved the way that the math program was set up. And so she did a lot of work on this new program. But Connie has always been someone who, every time something new comes down the pike, every time there's something interesting, she never rests on what has always been done. She's always looking for new things to do. She was a member of our teacher evaluation team. She, I know if Linda Dugan was here to talk about it, she'd say that she was the person that if she wanted to know what was going on, if she wanted to get some advice, or really feel what the teachers were feeling about something, Linda would go to Connie. And Connie always had a great pulse of the building and how things were going. So when Linda came in to visit a couple of weeks ago, and she's like, "Tell me it isn't so, I heard something, I can't believe it." But when I talked to Connie, she said it was just, she loves what she's doing, but financially it just makes sense for her to go at this time. So Connie will also be greatly missed in the West Bridgewater School System. And instructional assistant Peggy Hunt. Peggy Hunt has been at the Howard School, I think she's been for about 15 years also, as an instructional assistant at the Howard School. And I know that Peggy took on the yearbook, is the school photographer, goes on the nature's classroom, I mean, if there's something else that needs to be done, there's something extra, Peggy Hunt always steps up to the plate to do something extra. It's not just about being in her job, she's just, she always is doing, you know, she always takes the extra mile. And she always does it with a laugh, and a smile, and a joke, and it's, she just has such a great attitude over there at the Howard School. So I know that will be a big shoes to fill over at the Howard School, even jumping into class duty and things like that, she always did everything, just to go the extra mile. So I know they'll miss her over there, and it was great to have her all these years. So, there was a joke when I talked to Chief Hunt about, "Oh, does that mean you're going to retire now?" And he said, "No, I was told that she needs some time on her own person," and I'm going to go a little bit longer. So we'll miss Peggy Hunt also.
We will. Now, under Presentations, we have a presentation regarding the West Bridgewater Lions Club with Mr. McMurray.
Evening, everybody. Well, given the fact that I was told that this, though I'm important, I'm afforded about a minute and a half, so the slides are, I will explain them quickly, but first and foremost, I certainly wanted to publicly thank the Lions Club because I did petition for some money, and they generously afforded us some money to in fact do this project. The Engineering Design Class is a new class that we started a few years ago in the older high school in order to prep for this new fantastic space we have now. Some examples of things that we've done, we've done all these different examples, and some of them involve electricity, some of them involve some engineering, some of them involve some different physics principles. All of them gave them a chance to, I think, feel comfortable with some different tools and some ideas and our ability, their ability to electronically plan. And then what we're doing in the second half of the year, well, it's turning into the last third, is we're going to build these electric guitars, an idea that I had had that I thought was going to be great. If you go back one slide, not to, this is a CAD drawing that I had of a student that they made before we got started. You look at the next slide, this is in fact what they made. And I picked this one only because it was the best one we had, in fact, and with the highest, it was the most impressive. This idea, I think, sparks back with Dr. Oakley, I remember years ago, she was like, she wanted to have a situation where we could, you know, design something with CAD and then go off in the engineering space and build it. And here's just one example where we designed it with CAD, they went and they built it, it looks a lot like what they had designed, and then we fired them off, and then we trouble shot, and we went and redesigned them. So that was just a very simple, two-slide idea of one project that we did. And then now what we want to do, this is in fact one of the guitar kits that we just purchased, that we're going to put together with the kids. There are so many different things we can do, we have a STEAM common, and that's science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, and all of these things are rolled into one of the guitar when it comes to the idea of constructing it, to painting it, to playing it, the kids are really jazzed about it. It really speaks to the tangibility of what they're going to learn and be able to do as well, because I mean, of course, everything we learn is important and has application, but sometimes that can be lost on our teenagers at times, whereas the application is just there. So they're real excited, and that's just a little bit what I just mentioned. The last slide is just really just another public thank you for the opportunity for our kids, because they are really looking forward to it. Sandy Churchill's doing an article that she's putting together in the Enterprise that's going to chronicle our progress, and I look forward to see how that comes together.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you. The next presentation is the Costa Rica Exchange. Mr. Broadwell and Mrs. Page were going to be here. I believe they had videotaped their presentation as they are at the girls' semi-playoff game tonight for the MIA. So let's see how this works. Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you for our Costa Rica Exchange Program. Something of information for the Bible for the Catholics here. Those who are here tonight, myself, but in action at the West Bridgewater's host basketball game, it's the field of Boston with Division IV South study miles. This trip will be our second opportunity to visit the beautiful country of Costa Rica. Once again, our students will be staying with host families, staying among Costa Rica in learning language and culture, and this year, we'll be sending down a science teacher who will help explore the Bible University and make Costa Rica so unique and special. During the trip, our students will be taking various tours around the country, visiting all the beauty Costa Rica has to offer. And also, they'll be spending time in classes with their Costa Rican brothers and sisters. In January 2017, we welcome students and staff back from Costa Rica to West Bridgewater. Again, another wonderful learning opportunity for our kids. This year, one of the major concerns is the Zika virus. The Zika virus is not new, it was first discovered in 1947 in the forests of Aba. It slowly has spread to different parts of the world, and now includes Central and South At this time, Costa Rica is at the alert level two. This level states that people should practice enhanced precautions. This level is the same for Caribbean islands, Central, and South America. If the level were to go to level three, which is the warning level, avoid non-essential travel, then we would cancel the travel. Eighty percent of the people who are affected with the Zika virus have no symptoms, or don't even know they're infected with the virus. If a person does get sick, symptoms usually start two to seven days after being bitten by an infected mosquito. Symptoms include fever, rash, joint pain, and conjunctivitis. The CDC has issued a travel warning, the pregnant women are willing to be kept pregnant. The Zika virus is similar to viruses that we have here from Southeastern Massachusetts, such as Triple E and the West Nile virus. For all these three viruses, there are no pills or vaccines. But unlike the Zika virus, both Triple E and the West Nile virus have a severe symptoms. Precautions can be taken to help prevent the spread of the Zika virus. These precautions include the use of insect repellent DEEP, able to be reapplied as necessary. Covering our skin with long-sleeved clothing, pants, and hats. The skin and bedding can be used, available, can treat clothing with different chemicals. And the Costa Rican government is taking many precautions, such as spraying and controlling We are working on a school committee approval for our trip to Costa Rica July 8th through 26th. We hope that we can continue our exchange program with them, with them coming back here in 2017. We know you have any questions in concern, or are certain dying. Please feel free to contact us at any point, come in, visit us at school, or by email or phone. Any questions, anything we can do to help you, they give us it, please let us know. Once again, we thank you for your consideration, and have a great night.
I would like just to add, my understanding is, is that there has been a parent meeting set for March 24th, Dr. Oakley?
I think that's what you were going to decide tonight, if that's the route you want to go.
Okay, so I wanted to put out there to the committee that I think it's important to have a parent meeting for two reasons, as Mr. Holden had talked about it earlier tonight with me. You need to find out what the level of interest is to begin with, before we can even, obviously, have a meaningful discussion or anything. If there's not enough interest, then it's actually a moot point. So I think we were talking about scheduling and so forth, and we were looking towards the 24th.
Yeah.
And the second reason is, there are, you know, questions and issues and concerns that Mr. Broadwell will be available for this parent meeting as well, I believe Mrs. Page too. So that that would give parents a chance to do a little research on their own as well, and then come to the school with any questions that they have. So I think I'd like to put out there that the parent meeting is, I think, necessary, as well as, you know, just probably the next step to make the decision whether we need to even have a vote at our next meeting. So because of the presentation, Mr. Broadwell not being here, we wanted to try to see if it made sense to have the parent meeting after this presentation, and then we could discuss whatever we need to, and then at the next meeting, take the vote, if that makes sense to the rest of the members.
And I know you all, you all got packets, so I don't know if there's any questions you have, or any discussion you want to have about the information that can give you. And that's really what Mr. Broadwell did, is kind of take the main points out of the information that you got in your packet. And that information that you got in packets is the most up-to-date from either the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta, or the World Health Organization, so...
Yeah, I officially know more about Zika than I ever thought I needed to know.
You know more about Zika than you ever wanted to know.
Thought I would want to know, right. Dr. Oakley, could you just, do you know at this point in time what other cities or towns have restricted travel?
I don't know specifically all of them. I do know that the Boston Public Schools have canceled all their trips. They did it way back, beginning of January, they canceled all their trips to any countries that had Zika. They all, I do know that I put something out to area superintendents to see if they were going to any countries like this, and the only one that wasn't, it was happening during April vacation, that contacted me back was Situate. And it wasn't an exchange, but it was just a trip, and the Situate School Committee did cancel the trip in April vacation. However, because it was so close to the trip, the parents couldn't get their money back, so the company they were going through was going to allow them to go someplace else, so they'll still get to go away for vacation, but they did cancel that. When the Department of Public Health, Julie Immeral contacted them, and they put a survey out, and at that time, and I don't know the names, but she said, "Out of all of the schools that they heard from, there were 10 or 11 that had either decided not to send kids somewhere, or were going to cancel." A lot of the people I talked to, they, "Well, we're going to wait a little bit longer and see what happens." And when Boston came out and canceled it, they had trips all over the place, obviously, they're huge, so they had a lot of trips. And really, their reasoning for it was, they just didn't feel like there was enough information out there for them to make an informed enough and decision for the kids, so they decided to put them off. There are a few colleges that have been thinking about it also, Boston College, I saw that in the paper, like BC and Northeastern were thinking about trying to do their exchanges in places that didn't have the virus. Last I heard, I mean, one of the other big things that you hear about is the Summer Olympics in August in Rio, and the last thing that's come out from the International Olympic Committee is that they're not canceling the Olympics, but they're going to have the Brazilian government try to do a lot of precautions, like spraying and things that I know all of those governments are doing. So it's really kind of uncharted territory, because, you know, we don't have a lot of information, but we're at level two. And as Mr. Broadwell mentioned in the video, I think one of the things, it's use enhanced precautions, and the enhanced precautions are similar, if not, not similar, exactly the same, as when we go through our cycle that we have Triple E or West Nile. And Triple E, you know, goes in almost a seven-year cycle, you have it, and they get a lot of mosquitoes, and all of the night football games are canceled, and we make our kids not go out until second block during the morning. We cancel practice and don't let them be out at dusk. We say, "If you're going to go to something, use DEEP, and make sure you have long sleeves and long pants and all that stuff." So those are the, that's exactly what they're talking about, those are the precautions. We have to, we do that, but just like Zika has, is having an uptick now, we live in a world here that Triple E has an uptick. Last year, it was a little more West Nile. Last year, it was a little more West Nile. We barely heard about Triple E. We know that there's mosquitoes out there, but we didn't have to put all those restrictions in this year. Just about the time we get our new football field light, we'll probably have to do it because we'll be back in a while to think about it. But it goes through phases. So, it's the same thing. One of the differences is, with Zika, it's a daytime mosquito versus a nighttime mosquito, like we only have to worry about it at dusk and dawn and night. Not that they aren't out during the day sometimes, if it's in a place where there's pooled water or something like that, but it's not prevalent that they are. These mosquitoes are out during the day. It's a different type of mosquito. However, with what we know right now, because I don't want to say this will never happen, but what we have for information right now, if a person contracts West Nile virus or Triple E, it's worse as an outcome than what they're finding with a person that gets Zika, excluding a pregnant woman, or a child that's born when the mother contracts the Zika virus. But just if anyone else getting it, Triple E and West Nile have much more harmful effects than Zika, as of right now, with what we're going with right now. So as far as a committee goes, and I think it's important to get input from the parents, because we have to see if that many people want to go first. And if they do, what are their thoughts? Do they understand what's going on? Have they kept up on it? Do they have all the information? And then I think, you need to look at what you have in front of you, you need to look at what we have for information from the CDC, and decide, is that enough information to make an informed decision, and what way do you want to go with it? I don't think anyone on this board, I know nobody on this board is making a decision about whether or not to keep the exchange based on the exchange itself, because it was so successful. I mean, we had never done it before, and it was an extremely, extremely successful program on both ends. So this is truly just about the fact that this, there's been an uptick in Zika, and this happens to be one of the areas, and they moved it from a level one to a level two. And also, if we were having, if you did approve the trip in April, I think you need to approve it and have parents know that you're approving it with, but if it goes to the next warning level, no. Because it does say, the next warning level is avoid unnecessary travel. So that to me would be, but parents would need to know that, because you could lose money for that. So that's something to know upfront, that it ain't, because what if it happened in three months from now, before they leave? But that's important.
And who decides who moves it, or the level heightens, goes from two to three? Who decides that?
The World Health Organization.
Or the mosquito. Okay, any questions, or, so is, I think that's the best approach then, so March 24th, and we'll let Mr. Bodwell know, so he can put that out there?
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Holden had mentioned to me before, that I think it's imperative that the word get out, that if you're thinking of sending your child to Costa Rica, this is a mandatory meeting.
Right.
Because...
There's no second chance.
Again, we need to know how many people are interested. And if you got two people, then we couldn't do the trip anyway.
Right.
But you don't want to have two people show up, and then someone say, oh, I wanted to go, but I couldn't make that meet. I mean, we need to know how many people are interested in going this year.
Well, I feel the meeting's important enough that you'd make time to meet at the meeting, if you want to send your child.
Right.
I think, I think it's more important that we emphasize, when we send the information home with the students who are interested, that regardless of the evening it falls on, it's more of a parent information night. Students are welcome to come, but if they have obligations, their parents are the ones that need to be there. Excuse me, because the parents are the ones that are, and I hate to put it this way, they're footing the bill, they're the ones that are going to be nervous. I'm a parent just like everybody else, and, you know, we need to make sure that they have a full understanding of what is going to go on over the next two or three months before they go. And it could be, you know what, we have no control over this. It could be the day, it could be the week prior to them leaving, and it go, and it gets upgraded, and nobody can go. But that's something that we're going to have to take a chance at, and we need to put those cards on the table.
Right, they need to know that. Because on the other hand, three months from now, it could be that it...
Drops the other way.
And it goes the other way. And you don't know, that's the problem. We've, it's uncharted territory.
That's my comment.
Thank you.
So, just...
Is this a voting? We don't have to vote on this, it's just an information night.
Next month.
And we'll vote next month on what we think.
On April 4th, because by then, you can research, and I think, you know, it's important to get parental input.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Oakley. Under the superintendent's update, the middle, senior, high school, school building update.
Yeah, the biggest change or update that I have since, because don't forget, we didn't really have an update, we missed last month's meeting, because we had, we got snowed out, actually, last month's meeting. So that, so since our January meeting, a lot has happened with the plans of, on the artificial turf field, synthetic field. And we will be finishing up, or get, receiving the finished plans from the architect on the seating, the bleachers, the concession stand, light configuration, all that, probably in the next couple of weeks. And at the end of this month, we have another school building committee meeting, and the school building committee will vote for yes with those plans, and then what the next step would be, and most likely the next steps would be to go out to bid for that work. And, you know, the push is still on, and our hopes are that it will be done by the end of the summer, and July 1st would be the best, but at least by the end of the summer, so that we can start field hockey and football on those, on that field, and have everything in with the track and everything all ready to go for the fall sports. We never anticipated having anything here for the, for the spring, we knew that. So it's just the push to make sure, since things are going a little bit behind schedule, just to still make sure that we can have it for the fall. So, we're anticipating that we will be able to do that. And that's really the major change, the change orders have been, excuse me, not change orders, the punch list has come down, I think it started when we came in here in September, I knew it was something crazy, like four thousand items, and we're down to, I think they said a couple hundred left, in their small things.
Good.
There's a few change orders still out there, like some that we have to deal with, but pretty much we're, we're getting to the, to the end of this project. Well worth it, but ready to be near the end of it, so, that's all I have, I don't know what, anyone has anything else?
And the update on the selectmen and the FinCon meetings.
Yeah, we're going to present the budget to the selectmen on March 16th at 7:40. So if you can make that, selectmen, March 16th at 7:40, and the finance committee the next night, the 17th, at 7:25. And that is the, on the budget that you will be approving tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And now, under business, Dr. Oakley is going to discuss the donation in memory of Paul Chulie.
Yeah, the Paul Chulie Memorial Fund approached us in the fall about different projects that they wanted to do, and if we had certain things. And one of the things that we were interested in is a new scores table to go with the new building. And you can see that they did, a few weeks ago, come to a game and present that, and you can see how nice it is. It really, really is much better than what we could have imagined with a couple chairs to go with it. So, they came to one of the games and presented it, you can see there, and I'll tell you, it's pretty impressive when you see it from the other side of the gift, it really is, really is nice. And per our policy, with donations, that is a voting issue, that you need to vote to accept donations. Normally, you vote to accept the donation, and then we get it. However, we had a snow day, so I assumed that you would. I hope, I, but if not, you can tell them that you want to.
Could I have a motion to approve the donation of the scores table in memory of Paul Chulie?
Moved.
Moved, second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so very much, Chulie family. We're definitely lucky.
It is nice, to get a chance to see it.
It is beautiful. And also, under business, we have the fiscal year 2017 budget. So last meeting, this is for Dr. Oakley and Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith had gone through the budget line for line?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there were some changes that you had requested. I just did a little sheet on the front, so you could see what we changed, so that you don't have to go through the entire budget again. But at the special town meeting, the school roof was approved for Spring Street, so that was actually being able to just take off that $8,000 repair line off the budget, so that was great. The other things were, just on the cover page, we changed the amount that, the actual increase for all-day kindergarten was. It doesn't change the bottom line, it's just kind of fully stating it, but it is being funded by choice. We also talked about just adding some descriptions about the reclassification for the assistant superintendent, and we also put her travel up in the superintendent's. Let's see, I also just, more description about the transportation, just to show that that regular transportation does include the Norfolk Aggie students, just more of a clarification on that part, and then the school roof. So, overall, it was reduced by 8,000, and it's about a 4.5% increase for $11,627,478.
Excellent. Any questions? Concerns? Questions, concerns? Great. Could I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2017 budget as presented?
Moved. Second.
Moved, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And the next item under business is the school committee's, the annual town report letter. I was in the middle of drafting that, so I haven't had an opportunity to get it to the rest of the members, so I'd like to just see if we can possibly have that go to April's meeting as well. All in favor? Thank you. And the approval of policies. This is policy 8305, the bullying policy or the plan, and that's Mrs. Molly Smith and myself. When we had the last Safe Schools Committee meeting, there were some other things on the agenda, and we didn't have an opportunity as a committee to address the bullying plan, so we'd like to see if we can table that to April as well. The next school, Safe Schools meeting is, I think, the 22nd of March, so we'd have plenty of time. And the assignment of policies, policy number 100, which is the policy adoption policy. Can I vote to change that?
Cancel that, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Cancel.
I'd be happy to take that. So, take that. And then policy 3200, staff responsibilities, anyone interested?
I can take that.
All right, great, thank you, Bill. And policy 8300, the wellness policy. Actually, I think whoever decides to take that, I believe Julie Amaral had asked to be consulted or involved in that as well. She's had a very important, you know, interaction with that policy, so I think it would be good to make sure that whoever takes that. Anyone interested?
Probably the two of them.
You want to take that one? You want to take that, Donna? Excellent.
The life threatening one really goes with it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Didn't want to tell you until you...
Now you get both.
That's fine.
If you don't want the allergy one, I'll do it. See, because I have a boatload of them already.
No, they really do go together. Last time I did the two wellness and wellness covers.
Okay. I'm just...
Thank you. All right, so Donna, you'll have the wellness and the life threatening. And again, just reach out to Chulie, she'll be happy to help you out. And under warrants, warrant number 37A, dated March 10th, 2016, in the amount of $397,614.26. I believe this is a roll call vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recuse.
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. And the last three are policy 37B, dated March 10th, 2016, in the amount of $5,209.86. Policy number 37C, dated March 10th, 2016, in the amount of $137,715.48. And last, policy number 37D, dated March 10th, 2016, in the amount of $8,228.84. Could I have a motion for approval?
Moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And under the public forum section, members of the audience wishing to address this committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personal, personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Having no one here for the public forum piece, we'll move on to the calendars. For other, on March 9th, 2016, is a half-day of schools for all schools, and there's no pre- and preschool. March 21st is the CPAC meeting, and the Calmness Classroom, Mindful Kids at School and Home at 6:00 P.M., and the Middle, Senior, High School Learning Commons. And on March 25th, 2016, is no school, as it's Good Friday. And under the Middle, Senior, High School, March 7th to the 11th is the School Pride Week activities. March 9th is the Science Fair in the cafeteria from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. March 15th is the Pride Basketball Game from 5:30 to 9:00 in the gym. March 18th is Midnight Madness from 8:00 P.M. to 5:30 A.M. On March 23rd is College Admissions Night from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. in the auditorium. March 31st is the TriM Inductions at 6:00 P.M. in the Music Room. And April 1st is the Grand March at 6:00 P.M. in the gym.
At the Howard School, on March 8th, there's a PTO meeting at 7:00 P.M. in the library. On March 14th, Pi Day for Grade 6. On March 16th, Dare for Grade 6. On March 18th, Coffee Hour with the Principal at 8:30 A.M. in the Conference Room. On March 18th, PTO sponsor Ben Franklin for Grade 5 at 1:15, uh, 1:15 P.M. in the gym. On March 23rd, Life Touch Spring Pictures. On March 28th, Dare for Grade 8. And March 31st, the Pride Assembly in the gym at 1:45 P.M. I'm still going, sorry. Also at the Howard School, on April... Also at the Howard School, on April 1st, PTO sponsored Now Hear This for Grade Five at 1:15 P.M. in the gym. On April 4th, Book Fair at 8:20 A.M. to 1:05 P.M. On April 4th, PTO meeting at 7:00 P.M. in the library. On April 5th, Riff for Grades Four and Five at 12:45 P.M. And on April 7th and 8th, the Book Fair from 8:20 A.M. to 1:30 P.M. And on April 8th, we have Dare Again for Grade Six. And also on April 8th, the PTO sponsored Electromagnetism for Grade Five in the gym at 1:15 P.M.
The Roselle McDonald School, March 8th through the 10th, Wax Museum for Grade Three in the cafeteria at 8:45 through 10:00 A.M. March 12th, Easter Bunny Breakfast in the cafeteria at 9:00 to 11:00 A.M. March 16th, PTO sponsored Air and Flight for Grade Two in the gym. March 18th, PTO sponsored Ben Franklin for Grade Three in the gym at 9:00 A.M. March 21st, School Improvement Council at 3:30 P.M. in the reading room. March 30th, PTO sponsored Helen Keller, Champion of the Disabled for Grade Two in the gym at 9:00 A.M. March 30th, PTO sponsored Clara Barton Assembly for Grade Three at 10:45 A.M. in the gym. April 1st, Book Fair Preview Night in the cafeteria, 6:30 through 8:00 P.M. Spring Street School, March 15th, Life Touch Class Pictures. March 18th, Dinosaur Fossil Program for Kindergarten Classes. March 22nd through the 24th, PK, uh, sorry, pre-K registration for 2016, 2017. March 24th, Spring Street School Council Meeting, 2:45 in the teacher's room. March 29th through the 31st, 2016, 2017 kindergarten registration. April 1st, Gwendolyn and the Graceful Pig Program for kindergarten classes. April 7th and 8th is the Book Fair.
Excellent, thank you very much. Our next regular school committee meeting is Monday, April 4th at 6:30 P.M. at the middle, senior, high school learning commons. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Move second.
Move second, any discussion? All in favor? Excellent, good night, thank you.